Didn't happen.
Susan's that I could leave in an hour thirty minutes.
She was supposed to have like sixteen appointments or something.
Make the motion and second it.
But that is a shame that you couldn't.
Refresh?
Oh, they did. They paid just thirty, I had a sixteen hundred dollar bill. So my insurance paid three thousand dollars.
That's why they put us.
Sixteen hundred.
Technically challenged.
I'd agree with you, but.
Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started here. We do have six board members present, and I would like to welcome you to the August fourteenth Board of Education meeting. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. That passes six oh. Moving on to consent agenda. Dr. Cobb, is there anything in particular?
Just normal stuff.
All right, sounds good. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That also passes six oh. We are down to section four, which is comments from the public. And we do have a speaker this evening. Mr. Greg Hazen is going to come and speak regarding OHS coaching staff and sports. And I just would like to remind any speakers that we ask that you limit your remarks to not more than five minutes. We are not able to hear any criticisms of identified individuals. And we will listen to the public comment, but we will not respond. We may direct the superintendent to follow up at a later date on questions asked or concerns raised. So, Mr. Hazen, if you'd like to come up and speak? Yes?
I appreciate you guys giving me time to come here tonight and talk about our sports. You know, I've been in Ottawa for quite a few years. I got grandkids playing sports. Our coaching staff is why I came here. I think it's time for a change. And I think there's wrestling, there's basketball, all the sports. It's time for a change here in Ottawa. We have no backing. Homecoming game. We went halftime. Everybody done their programs and stuff, and the stadiums just cleared out. Half of the stadiums left on Friday Night Football. And when it comes to that, there's a problem. And I think us as a community, as board members, we need to look at all the aspects and get all the sports together. You know, and it just, we gotta do something. The kids are getting down. I don't think the kids respect the coaches now. I've seen them disrespect the coaches, which is not right. But I think the coaches is our main problem. And I think it's time we've been, gave them plenty of chances to come forth and do something with our sports. But I think everybody needs to look at what we're doing here. I think we got plenty of parents that's gonna stand behind the kids. But I think it takes the school board, the parents, everybody, the whole community. But we're not gonna get any response unless we make changes. The parents are just not gonna put out, they're put out because of the coaches and the way things are running, you know. And it's just time for a change, you know. I've watched the coaches. I do a lot of yelling at football games. You guys probably already heard me. You know, I do a lot of yelling. But it's not mean yelling, you know. It's just trying to get the kids picked up, let's go, you know. Hundred percent. Whenever anybody goes out on that field, coaches, players, it ought to be a hundred percent. And I'm just not seeing that hundred percent. So, but I appreciate you guys giving me the time to come here, and I hope you look at this. And hopefully, we can make some changes here in Ottawa so we can get the whole town back into our sports system. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak with us this evening. Okay, we are on reports and presentations, section five point oh one. We have Ms. Caro and Mrs. O'Neil with some students that are, present their collective writing project between Lincoln Elementary and OHS. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. I'm Mrs. Caro. I teach English and creative writing at OHS. And it's my first year here with the district, and it's always been like that rainbow moment to teach a creative writing class. And so when I launched off this semester, I asked the students what kind of projects they wanted to do. And I said, do you guys want to write a children's book? Because that's a whole genre sometimes that is left unexplored in creative writing. And they were like really excited anyway. And then I said, what if we got together with an elementary class? And collaborated between elementary students and high school students? And they like give like sugar to a high schooler. That's what happened. They were all over the place. They were so excited. So they've written up some comments. I have comments for the whole class that they have certain words they'd like to say.
All but in really quickly, because I just have to say that the reason I even got involved in the first place is I went to the Activities Fair at the high school. And I bumped into some of my amazing former students that I had in elementary school. And of course, you know, you just, you ask them how they're doing and what their plans are. And I have the advantage of having a high schooler as a freshman this year as well. And I bumped into Kylie, and I just said, Kylie, what's going on? I said, I would really love to partner with somebody or have you come in and volunteer in my classroom. Because Kylie and her sister, Anna, are, they volunteer all the time in my classroom. And I just, I just wanted them to come back in in an educational aspect and get to know my students on kind of that one-on-one level. And she said, well, it just so happens that I have a great idea for you, Ms. O'Neil. My writing teacher has said that she wanted to make some children's books. And so I really have to give props to Kylie because she really got it going. She was our liaison, and she was the go-between. And so she really connected Lincoln to the high school. So I just wanted to say thank you to Kylie for kind of taking charge on that because she did a great job. And I'm glad to have her and Gwen and Xander and all of the other creative writers come into our classroom and to collaborate with our fourth graders. Because we are really having a ball. So thank you. So that's the introduction.
So I'm Kylie, and I believe that this collaboration has really been a very good learning experience. And based off of, like, there's a variety of different personalities that not only like the fourth graders get to experience with us as high schoolers, but also us as high schoolers get to experience with the fourth graders. And we also, we don't just connect with kind of sharing ideas between a children's book. It's also like connecting on like a friendly level. Like, we're getting to know each other deeper than just coming up with ideas. And it's a chance to, like, we're bringing new ideas and new, like, thinking ways for these fourth graders. But they're also teaching us in a way to where we learn to interact with them and different people. Because us high schoolers, we're surrounded by teachers, we're surrounded by people that are our own age, and we don't really get that aspect of cooperating with younger students. So it really broadens our mindset on how to connect with younger minds. Thank you.
So my favorite part is like having my own ideas and then getting more ideas and trying to like merge them together, I guess. And like, I'm a big fantasy person. I like dragons and magic and stuff. And getting a partner that liked the same things as I did was fun. I don't know. It was just, you know, a good, you know, it was easy for me. I don't know. I'm not good at words.
Well, your writing says otherwise.
And I'm very good at having my own ideas and taking off with them. But getting more ideas and having to use them and having to fit them with my own ideas was a good learning experience for me.
This always happens to me. I never thought, like, I never would have expected for me, a high schooler, to have the same idea as a fourth grader. Because we literally have like the same exact idea of how we wanted the story to go. And it was crazy. And working with them was a pleasure because I was having fun the whole time. I'm pretty sure they were having fun the whole time, too. And they got to learn, they got to learn like plot structure and how, like, how to build a great story. It was awesome.
Very good.
And we have a partnership here. So just to preface that.
This is one half of my partnership. There's another fourth grader that I have, but this is one of them.
What I like about this project is that we get to work with the OHS creative writing students, and we also get to share our own stories together. We also get to go to OHS and work on our stories together, and we also, and explore the building. They also come to our school, Lincoln Elementary. I'm most excited about getting to publish our story. I hope you like this project, because I'm excited. How about you?
The only other thing that I would really add for my part is that, to kind of play off of what Xander said, it is really amazing to get to see how thoughtful the students are now in their own writing. We've been talking about story elements and plot structure, well, since the dawn of the year. And they are really able to articulate, I should say, our fourth graders are able to articulate all of those story elements and plot structure. And it's just, it's just been an amazing experience to get to see them grow, not only in their friendships and their partnerships, but in their writing as well. And we cannot wait to see the final published versions of these books.
Speaking of the published versions, currently, OHS students are working with the words they have written and the illustrations that the fourth graders have started. And they're starting to lay that out and figure out what pieces are missing and what needs to be inserted. So we will have one more meeting where the high schoolers go to Lincoln on October twenty eighth in the morning at about eight o'clock, I think, is when we'll get there. And we'll be there for about an hour and a half collaborating. But the OHS students at this time are really like learning that fight between like, well, they wanted this in their story, and how do I do that? When I already have a dragon and a dog and a princess, like, and where do I put the spider? And I'm like, I don't know. Review and maybe just an illustration. So we're making compromises to, and going through that editing and revising is fun and challenging for them at the same time. So the overall goal of this project then is to turn these stories into a published book format. So that the fourth graders and the OHS students each get a copy to take home with them, kind of as the culminated project at the end.
So will the, will the book be like a hardback book or more like a magazine style?
It might be more paperback, like a paperback children's book you might see in a library. That's one of the technicalities we will have to work out in terms of how we get it published and where we get it published at. I would imagine, just to save on cost, it'll be paperback instead of hardback.
I think it's a pretty neat concept. So, good job to you students who came in and presented. I know it takes a lot to stand up there and, and share your thoughts in front of a fairly large audience today. So, so kudos to the three, four of you. And I'm looking forward to seeing the end result.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you so much for coming to share with us tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you again so much.
Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Walker has to follow that great presentation here. He is here from Lloyd Builders to give us an update on what's going on with our construction.
Yeah, thanks. Talking in front of a large crowd either.
If you don't have princesses and dragons, we don't want to hear about it.
I think we're good, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Well, obviously, everyone up there knows me. For those in the audience that might not, I'm Josh Walker with Lloyd Builders. Dr. Cobb's asked me to come talk a little bit about the home stretch of the Bond program. We're down to the last few months, really, to complete what was about fifty-six million dollars worth of work on our end. The Performing Arts Center is very close. We're gonna certainly be able to achieve a certificate of occupancy before the end of the month. And then there'll be a period where, and actually, we're gonna be starting that here in the next week or so, where there's, there's a lot of unique elements in that particular part of the building to do owner training so that folks understand how to use the, use the building. But once we're done and we get occupancy, we'll still have some punchless items to take care of. Our staff will remain on site for a period of time just to make sure that we're responsive to issues that come up as the facility starts to get used. Over at Garfield, that's progressing really well as two, and we would expect to be able to have occupancy on that early part of December. The, the interior is moving right along. With some good weather, we can get the, the site graded out and concrete done. So that's, that's gone really smoothly as well. And it'll be similar, but not nearly as complicated as the Performing Arts Center. Once we get down to the end, we'll do some owner training, make sure that the, the equipment that's in that facility is understood and can be used by staff. And we'll get our punch list taken care of, and, and certainly being here in town, if there's warranty issues that pop up, we'll get on that as quickly as we can. So that's kind of the, the pathway to the end, and certainly available to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Walker?
Just so our board does know, the last piece of the playground is coming up here in the next few weeks. Josh talked about some grading work and whatnot at the Pre-K Center that, hopefully, if you look at the long-range forecast, it looks like we've got about seven or eight days of pretty decent weather coming in here that, that hopefully, we can get some things done. If that can happen, then we should be able to start concrete and playground construction work, or concrete should be done. Playground construction work can hopefully start beginning in November. And we can, we can possibly get the Pre-K piece of the, of the playground done within two, the first two or three weeks of November prior to us going on Thanksgiving break. And then we can be done with playgrounds, and we can only worry about the Pre-K Center. By that time, the pack should be open and ready to go. And it could be the last piece of what has been a very long five years of construction here. Although, if you take a look at the entirety of the picture, an incredible five years of construction and really some awesome spaces for our kids. And again, the, maybe the, the, the bow on top of it all, the PAC is yet to be showcased to anybody. And, and we've kind of kept it under wraps. Most of our board has not even been through it in any recent time to see seats and the finished product of the clouds and, and all of those things. But we'll, we'll make sure when we have the open house that, that people get to come in and see it for what it is, which is, was truly a spectacle. It is an incredible space for our kids.
Certainly, yeah. And I, I guess as we get close to the end, I don't know if I'll, I'll see this group again before those spaces get turned over. I guess I'd just like to say on a personal note that this Bond program has been everything that I had hoped it would be in terms of what I hoped I could do to participate in moving the community forward. I deeply appreciate the opportunity to serve USD two ninety. I couldn't be prouder of the team that we put together, the way we went through this, dealt with issues, and, and really turned out a fantastic program for the community, so.
We appreciate the partnership, for sure.
Absolutely. Are there any, any other questions for Mr. Walker while he's here? Well, thank you so much for giving us an update, and thank you for all you've done on this project. We sure appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Yep, thank you.
Okay, five point oh three, Boys Town data. Mr. Robinson.
There we go. So I talked to Dr. Cobb's about the opportunity to come and present, and I'll try to run through this fairly quickly. Three years ago, when we started down the Boys Town Road, I don't know that we had any idea that we would have invested what we have at this point. And part of tonight is hopefully to show the board some of the results that we're starting to get out of it. We're seeing it start to change the culture in our schools. And, and Boys Town, along with addition of social workers and some other staffing changes, but we're starting to see teachers really take ownership of this. Now, there is a subgroup still waiting for it, like champs and other things that we've done to go away. And so that's the other piece of keeping this in front of the board is, is making sure that we continue to put out the message that this is something, we're not there yet. We still have work to do. We've got to continue to fine tune and make progress. But I wanted to tie it to our strategic plan. There's two places in our strategic plan that we address social, emotional. What I was excited when I went back looking at the strategic plan and, is where anywhere Boys Town's listed, there's a number of other indicators that are there. On most of our social, emotional items, we're actually ahead of where we expected to be at this point, as far as addressing those initiatives and starting to get things in place. On this one, for example, creation of a Boys Town screener, our social workers and school counselors met with Mrs. Fanning, Mrs. Bybee, and myself early on in the year and chose, instead of creating our own, to use the Sabers, which is a national norm piece that's already embedded in FastBridge, which keeps a lot of our data in one location. The regulation of emotions is a piece that was there from Zones of Regulation and is, continues to be there. But, but there's some nice pieces. When you look at the Boys Town piece specifically, we've already trained trainers, we've already trained consultants. And our trainer from Boys Town who went through last year and did this data suite process has continued to share with us, even as frustrating as steps of this process are, that we're ahead of where most districts are at this point in the process. So keep in mind, at this point, we've trained all of our elementary teachers. We provided another training this year for new teaching staff. We've trained all of our paraprofessionals K-12. And this year, we also, when we offered it for new teaching staff, we had middle school special ed and a few specialty positions at the high school and middle school that participated in the training as well. So we're starting to see it expand. But the big question then is, how do we get better and where do we go from here? So I wanted to share a few things. I mentioned Sabers upfront. There's two pieces of Sabers, and I won't go very deep into it. There's a piece that the teacher rates every student in their classroom. And there's also, from third grade on up, there's a, my Sabers, where the students are rating themselves. So I put this in just to give you a picture of when we talk about risk for social, emotional, or academic behavior issues in the classroom, how big of a part of our population are we dealing with? And right now, we're looking at about twenty-five percent. It doesn't, there's no middle ground on their rating scale, so it's either you're at risk or you aren't. Which is a little bit deceiving, because some of those could be just an area, you know, one sub-area of the, of the tool. But I felt like outside of our, our Boys Town data, it gave you a better picture of what we're dealing with in our school. That doesn't mean that we have twenty-five percent of our kids who are turning over desks and being completely disruptive in the room. Some of them, it could be that I'm passive, and I'm sitting in the room, and I'm trying to disappear from the classroom. And we've got to do some things as a school to pull them back in and reengage them in school, just as much as those outgoing, more disruptive behaviors. So keep that in mind when you look at that data. So when we talk Boys Town, there are several areas that we're trying to, to address. And I put these on here because I want to keep reminding people that when we talk about Boys Town strategies, these are things we were asking teachers to do for years. A lot of this is not new, but it's come with a new structure to it. When you think about being proactive, for years, teachers have been trained, when I'm gonna send my kids down the hall, I want to give them a reminder of how I want them to act. Where do I want their hands to be? That their voices are off, all of those kind of things. This is putting it, though, where teachers throughout the building are using those, those preventative strategies. Relationship building is something that we've always, since I've been part of the district, have talked about, being an important piece of instruction, and that you can't teach a kid until you've built a relationship with them. The whole learning environment piece of, now we're pushing for more expectations to be posted, school rules to be posted. We want things that the kid can kind of predict. When I go into this classroom, this is what it's gonna look like. And the bottom two are probably the newest two to us. We've always talked about praise, but I don't know that we've talked about it of wanting to get four praises for every one correction. And some of your data will say your kid's with high behavior that probably actually need a ratio that's higher than that in your classroom. So some of these pieces are probably the newest pieces to our teachers. So what does the process look like? We trained five consultants. They were responsible for going through each elementary classroom. They would spend about twenty minutes, some of them a little bit less than that, some of them a little bit more, but about twenty minutes observing, collecting data. And then the other benefit to it beyond the data is about ten minutes after that, the teacher comes out with the consultant, and there's a conversation about what they saw. So it's feedback for the teacher. It's not, we are, we get to look at district data tonight, but really, the benefit is probably more in the conversation and the feedback, that the teacher can then ask questions and go right back into their classroom and hopefully improve on, on what they're doing. We're seeing some phenomenal stuff with our teachers, especially those that have really bought in from day one. So each school has their own individual data. Mrs. Fanning took the individual grade level data, combined it, and that's what you're seeing tonight is the district level data. In part, we want to make sure that our consultants and the work they're doing, that there's some trust they're building with their building. This is a new process of going in and observing, taking feedback on peers. And, and we want them to know that the data that they have for their building is their building's to be able to use and guide the work of their building. And so I chose tonight to stick strictly to district level data. So here's what I would tell you. I was, when we were looking at this, if you look at that whole right side of the graph, it's kind of the result piece. And we're seeing, I would say, pretty high levels of on-task behavior. That's as a consultant, I go in the room, I'm scanning the room, I'm looking for, are the majority of students when I go in, on task or off task. We're seeing strategies that are building relationships in classrooms. This is interaction between the teacher and the student. The physical environment piece, I think we'll see as we continue to collect the data, will go up. In part, this was a new expectation for our teachers. Like, we've always talked about having visual schedules and posting your rules. But now, when you send somebody through and that's what they're looking for, I think as, as schools redefine what they want up in classrooms, what they want up in hallways, what should be visible in instructional spaces, I think that's an area that we'll really see increase. And the other one that was exciting to me is that very last one, the behavior compliance piece. And that's where a teacher is going to give a prompt to a student, and our consultants are tracking whether or not the students respond positively. We would love to see a school environment where that happens a hundred percent of the time, that we ask a kid to do something. But it's just not a realistic goal for us at this point. So overall, before I mention some of the areas that we're working on, I want to highlight again all the work that our staff have done. That piece is extremely positive, that we're moving our behavior strategies in the right direction. And that we've got a lot of teachers working really hard to make sure that kids in classrooms are getting what they need and that they're in safe school environments. With that said, there's a few areas I would mention to you. And keep in mind, this is kind of our baseline. This is the first time we've collected this data. So one of the pieces that jumped out at us that we're really looking closely at is our ratio of praise to correction. And I mentioned earlier that our target with our Boys Town strategy is really four to one. Every, every time you're in a classroom, you should hear four praises for every correction. We're, we're pretty close to about one and a half to one. So we've got some work to do there. The other piece with that is we want to make sure that our praise is really specific and effective. So rather than me just saying, great job, where a kid may or may not connect that to whatever they were doing, being real specific that, great job for your, for raising your hand and waiting patiently. As a kid, I can now connect that I'm getting positive praise from my teacher for a specific task, specific skill. And you can see when you talk about that effective praise piece where that whole statement would occur, we've still got some work to do. And so part of this is gonna be, it's outside of what you would naturally do as a teacher. You're wanting to keep your room going. You're wanting to keep your room going, you're wanting to keep moving forward. So some of this is going to take lots of practice and additional PD to be able to get to the point where we're really seeing that become ingrained in how our teachers respond. But now we've got data to be able to track it and data to be able to go back to staff and talk about areas that we need to work on. And to be able to track as they put time and energy into it, we've got data to be able to show progress as well. So the other piece, we're still really, really heavy on when a student's not responding of using corrective prompts. That's our number one strategy right now. And so our buildings will continue to work to build in some of the other pieces. Corrective teaching being one of the more effective is still one of our lower areas. So these are things and what we're trying to do with the data at this point is take it back to buildings. So our consultants and our trainers are both released by Boyz Town to do, our trainers to do the full training. Or they can pull out pieces of it. So if Garfield, for example, said corrective teaching's an area we want to focus on, they could choose to work through our trainers to just do professional development around corrective teaching. An added benefit is our consultants have also been released to do specific topics. So my understanding, and they can correct me if, if I'm wrong, is that they're not released to do the full well-managed school training. But the individual components of it, their schools could rely on them to provide professional development for a team or a group of teachers as well. So at this point, they have gone back, many of them have already discussed it with their building leadership teams. Some of them have already discussed it at the building level. I think at least one of the school has already taken it back to their staff and started identifying specific areas that they want to target over the next nine weeks. And then we come back and we'll repeat this process each quarter. So my intention is not to bring that data to you every time in a full presentation. But my hope would be over time that you get used to seeing the data as we share it. And that we'll be looking for, for areas of, of growth and areas where we can support teachers better as they try to support our students. The one spot in our district that's not supported well by what we've done so far is our Engage program because it runs a slightly different program. And so I would just mention here how we're, how we're supporting them. A lot of the elements of well-managed schools connect to what we would do in specialized classroom. So we'll continue to utilize them to train new staff in, in praise and corrective teaching and all of those elements. The one piece that's missed, that's missing is the motivation system. And so we've recently purchased some online modules to be able to support our staff in continuing to learn that piece. And then, you know, we can still access Boyz Town should we need to, should we hire a new teacher who needs the full training. We could still access it if we, if we choose to. The other thing is monitoring their data looks different because they won't do it through data sweeps. They will instead do it through card review. So all of the students at Engage start on a point system, on a point card. And you'd be amazed how much you can learn by processing through those, both in how staff are responding to the program, but also growth of, of students. So and that's a whole nother presentation. Ivy Briggs has done a tremendous job over there of going in and, and trying to learn the system. We've put in some new staff. We've seen probably our largest numbers we've seen over there at this point. So there's some real challenges, but they've responded well to those challenges. And so we'll continue to support them that way. But I just wanted to mention it since it is outside of, of that other presentation. So I wanted to conclude, we've, I invited our trainers and consultants, not all of them could be here. If you're a trainer or consultant, can I just have you stand up? So I wanted to recognize them, we're not getting the growth that we're getting unless we can get teachers to buy in and support it. And some of them to go into a peer's room and not just collect data, but to provide feedback and have some difficult conversations when things aren't going well is commendable. They've done a tremendous job of getting this process started and I just wanted to say thank you guys for all the work that you've done. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do have a question.
I figured you would.
Well, would you define praise to correction? I think I have an idea, but...
So, and they could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but you're looking at in that time while they're doing observations, the, the number of times that a teacher provides praise to the number of times they correct a student. So, and if you think back to previous teacher training, we've seen that number, it's, it's been five to one, it's been seven to one, and it's been some of your behavior, high behavior programs will even say 13 to one. That really when a kid gets reinforcement for doing what they're supposed to be doing, that you have a better chance in a school environment of, of getting sustained change than you do by prompting on the things that they're doing wrong. Yes, sir?
One thing I will say on one of your comments about 75% getting your kids to listen. I think that's great because I think that's about where I'm at at home. But you may have explained it before, but can you explain what Sabers is and My Sabers?
So, and you'll probably hear Mrs. Bybee talk about FastBridge a little bit more, which is our, is the larger system that has a reading component and a math component. Sabers is brand new to us. It's a behavior screener. So it's there for our schools to be able to use to look at a whole class of kids or grade level kids and to see who's at risk and who may need intervention. There's, there's some tremendous pieces to it. Our team's been looking at it a lot. One of the things I love about it is you can take an individual kid and you can pull up their graph and it will show the like 10 areas that are assessed on Sabers. And it will show you how they rated themselves and how the teacher rated themselves or rated the student, how it compares. You can start to see, are there things that we're missing? But also when we met with our social workers this last week, they're starting to use that information to put their small groups together, their intervention groups. So you can narrow it down to a specific skill that that kid is struggling with. And we could provide targeted support just for that specific skill.
One of the things that probably be helpful to, to understand is that a behavior screener is not new to our district. We've been doing behavior screeners since we, we started with the CI3T program about five years ago. The, the difference between where that was and where we're at now is that that was one more thing isolated in amongst itself that if you wanted that data, you had to go to the SRSSIE data cloud, which was typically just an Excel document. And it didn't correlate to any of the other things along the spectrum. With FastBridge, it's embedded in the system and you can begin to see how that screening data impacts the other pieces of our learning and, and those those pieces that we identify as, as supports and intervention are somewhat intertwined now. And we can understand how they work together to benefit our, our students' needs, which has been a huge positive for us. Now, FastBridge, and again, Amy will talk about this at some point in time in the, in the future, but it is a new system and understanding and, and you know, we took away AmesWeb to implement FastBridge. And it, it seems like there should just be an easy implementation cycle. Oh, we're not doing this anymore, but we're going to do this now. But FastBridge is so comprehensive. And there are so many different components that we can utilize that it really is a very intensive system that is going on. And again, we will, we will hear some things about how it, how it is fast, maybe not FastBridge in and of itself, but what FastBridge does for us will soon be mandated by the state of Kansas. We're ahead of that curve, getting our teachers prepared and trained for how it works. But with all of the dyslexia conversation taking place, it will be a mandated piece of, of, of curricular intention and format and all of those things. Probably within this year. I know that the, the group is supposed to meet with our legislature in the upcoming, in the, in the Kansas State Board of Education. So that is coming. But that is a, a difference from what we saw in the previous behavior screeners and how we utilize them versus how we're utilizing it with FastBridge and Sabers.
Yes, sir.
So Sabers is part of our Boyz Town then?
It's not. I only put it, and I put it into this document because I think one of the things when we talk Boyz Town strategies is it's hard sometimes to provide a picture of how great is the need in our district. I don't know that we're ever going to eliminate behavior in a school system right now. When you look nationwide at kind of where things are going, I think our goal with Boyz Town was to equip our teachers and make sure they had supports in place that they felt comfortable with. And I think we're, we're seeing some of those things start to align. And our hope would be that we'd still see that number. Right now at 25%, it's probably still a little bit higher than what we'd like to see it. I mean, most of your data will say it should be around 15% that you're going to have a subgroup that you're going to need really intensive support for, and you're going to have 10 or 15% that are going to need additional support in the classroom. So we're not there yet. But we're, I, I would have liked to have seen this data five years ago. It just wasn't real clear where we could pull it out of our screener the way we can now.
Can I, can I add one piece? Just to what you had said, Chris, is that the, the counselors and the social workers actually before we even, we're in the process of purchasing FastBridge, look to see if Sabers correlates to those Boyz Town skills, and they do. So that if they see that their kids are at risk in a certain behavior, they can correlate that to which Boyz Town skills they might need to see. So that way the teachers should know what they can address.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Robinson, thank you very much for presenting that to us. And thank you all, trainers and consultants that were here tonight. We appreciate all the hard work that you've done. And there's a reason why other districts are impressed when we say that we not only use Boyz Town, but that we have trainers and consultants. That's really a big thing. So we appreciate all of it.
All right, we are down to board reports. Thank you.
He'd skipped over the last one.
I can't read that far away anyway.
He doesn't want to hear it.
Uh, do we have any board reports from our members tonight?
Not yet.
I think we're all getting ready to do our site council. Thing is probably coming up shortly if we haven't already. Anyone already done that? All right, we've got more to come then. So we will move on to section six. We've got the service dog policy.
So this is, this is a new conversation and I, we've attached a couple of documents that are just drafts for you to start to look at, but we're still really in the development stage. So we've had, we've had this conversation a couple of times over the last year where we've had students bring up the idea of bringing animals in for support. And so we reached out to our attorney and also to a couple of other districts just to get a recommendation. I'd like, it's another one of those things we'd like to get out ahead of and make sure that we've got a good policy in place to, to support it. So what I would tell you, the two documents that are there for you to review and more than anything to have a conversation tonight about if there's other areas you want us to look into. So service animals and therapy, therapy dogs are separated intentionally. Service animals are protected under ADA. So if I have a, an animal that I need with me for a specific task, probably the most widely known is a CNI dog that I needed to help me be able to get around the school. Those are things that we really can't refuse. They're protected under ADA and so by law, we recognize that we have to allow them into our school. And so we want to put some procedures in place for what does that look like and when could they be removed? There are some things in the law that would allow us to do that. That if we have a student who says, this is something I really need, that we could go back to, here's the procedures we have in place and what we expect from, from you as a student. From a therapy dog standpoint, they are typically there to provide services to a whole group and not to one individual student. And so most districts, they're not protected under ADA by the same guidelines, same laws. So most districts will really limit who can bring a therapy dog into their school. Our recommendation at least for starting the conversation is very much the same way. And that is that it's really something that our, our school would bring in, like we did years ago with, with Maris at the elementary level, or the, that it would be our choice to contract to bring an animal in because it meets the needs of a bigger group. But really what we would be putting this policy in place would be to guide that if a student has an animal and the law allows for two different animals, they allow for a dog, they allow for a miniature horse. But either way, you'd have to be able to show, yeah. And it also says miniature horse, you'd have to, to, we'd have to make preparations in our building to meet that need. I'm not aware of a school in our area because the couple I talked to were all waiting for that request. Because we're not even sure what a reasonable accommodation looks like in that case. But it is allowed by the law to have either a dog or a miniature horse. And so knowing what the law said, we copied what several other districts have done here and we put together a list of procedures. And I won't go through all of them tonight. But what I would mention to you is the procedures are there basically to say if you're bringing the animal in, you're, you're assuming the liability for it, you're also responsible for managing it and everything else that would come with it during a given day. Our only response in that would be if we have an elementary student or a student because of their ability that, let's say the dog needs to go outside and we don't feel comfortable sending the student outside by themselves, that our staff would accompany them to assist that way. But it puts most of the responsibility back on the individual that's bringing the animal into school. There's also some guidelines as far as, and this is from the law, that say we can ask for the animal to be removed. And typically that is if the animal is unsafe, meaning the, the student can't manage it, can't control it. Or if you get into things where it's, it's causing a health issue, and I don't necessarily mean allergy wise, I mean more from the standpoint of it not being housebroken and causing issues at school that way. And so the procedures kind of spells that out. It also spells out what paperwork we would need on file to be able to allow the dog into our school system. Typically, most districts are requesting vaccinations. Any licensure that would be required by the city of Ottawa. And then, then something to suggest that it's been trained by a program that's recognized by the American Kennel Club. Which kind of restricts that your, there's lots of places you can go online right now and print these documents. And so we're not trying to make it difficult. We just want to make sure that we're, if we're allowing an animal in for a specific purpose, that we're doing everything we can to ensure the safety of all of our students. So that's a quick overview, but are there questions I can try to answer? And if I don't have the answers, we will get the information and bring it back at the next board meeting.
You know, it's funny you brought up allergies because one of the first things that popped in my head was, you know, what do we do about kids who might have an allergic reaction to the therapy dog or the the CNI dog?
Yeah. So therapy dogs are easier in that we're typically, we would be in control of where they come in and where they go. So if you have allergy concerns, obviously we're going to try to avoid those areas. Your service animals are a little bit trickier because you're talking about restricting either the movement of the student or what class they're in. And so it would be a, a scenario where we would have to sit down with the student and building principal and just work through the best plan that we can come up with. It is one of those things that by law, we're, we're allowing them to bring it in. And so we'd want to work through as, as much as we could even before the student starts. But it, it's the biggest question. Anytime this topic comes up with other special ed directors at, at our regional meetings, the allergy piece is the number one question. That and where do you allow access in your building? Some of them will restrict access to cafeteria and other, others believe that infringes on what ADA allows. And so what you have here is kind of what Mike sent to us and had recommended. And so that's, that's what we provided.
Sure. I mean, I'd be curious to go back in time to see how this discussion played out when Maris was brought on board. Because I'm sure there's something somewhere that addresses that issue.
What allergies?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know that we've ever had any policy or guidelines. I know when I was principal at Eugene with Maris, we had very few concerns and part of this was staff loved having, for the most part, enjoyed having Maris in the building. And from a kid and family standpoint, Maris was very well received. But Maris's main role was comfort. And so you had an option as a student to be able to participate with Maris or spend time reading to Maris. It wasn't something you were required to do. The difference with a service animal is if those students are in the same classroom, you know, now we've got a, a new challenge that we would need to work through. The other piece, just to be aware of, there's been recent, and when I say recent, probably three or four years ago, there was a Supreme Court ruling. It used to be that in a lot of these cases, and that's why it's kind of picking up speed, it used to be that a school district could say, well, we're not going to allow the animal in, but we'll get a paraprofessional and they'll provide that support. There's been some rulings and if we get into that kind of conversation, we can rely on our attorney to guide us a little bit more. But to suggest that the team would really have to ensure that putting an adult there would be able to do everything that the animal can do. And now when you've got animals that are there for diabetic reasons or for seizures, it's hard to suggest that a paraprofessional, even well-trained, is going to see all of those things that
Sure.
a well-trained animal might be able to do.
Now, I am by no means against having these dogs or miniature horse. I just, I personally like dogs, so I've got two of them. I just, I personally like dogs, so I've got two of them, and I love them to pieces. But I just want us to be aware that, you know, there are students out there, even
Absolutely.
staff who could be allergic to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think that, allergies are certainly one of the things. We also have kids that are very afraid of dogs.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether it's the fluffy little golden retriever or anything else. And there is some apprehension about this on all sides. And again, part of, part of the practices and policies and the procedures that we have to put in place are to identify what we're going to do for the entirety of the student body, not just for the benefit of one or two or groups of students. So it's part of the reason why we're trying to have this conversation now, maybe get some insight and ask these questions of our board, so that we can develop an appropriate policy that best meets our needs moving forward.
The other piece that's here is it does give us, I mean, we're requesting, I think getting here, it's 10 days notice before the, the animal would be entering our school. Currently, we have no policy. And so, you know, at, at least in this case, it would give us some time as a school system to be able to work both with the, the student involved, but also with the school to try to, you know, mitigate some of those things before they came in. Where right now, I don't know that we have a, a whole lot to stand on other than, you know, hoping that the, the student bringing the animal in is, that the family is reasonable and would work with us. So this would at least give us some, some procedures to follow. Susan?
One of the things I didn't see in the policy was if the school district has a service animal. And I didn't know if that was covered somewhere else, or if you just, like, the external one versus an internal one that the counselor would say initiate. And so I didn't know if that needed to be added.
So I think the way, and I'll go back and look at it just to be sure. Typically, what we would be bringing in would be a therapy animal.
Right.
I mean, even if you think back to Maris, we're not talking about specific tasks. We're thinking whole group. And in the, in the draft policy that's on here, it does talk about that, that the only group that would be able to bring those in right now would be the school district, and it outlines kind of the same procedures. And I think allergies, I'll go back and just double check and make sure, I think it's addressed in that section as well.
If there are, you know, if we allow it from the school district and then, you know, there has to be the same playing field.
Yeah. Well, and what's here, and this is similar to a couple of other districts in the Kansas City area, is it really restricts that a therapy animal would be something district could choose to do because it benefits a large group, but that we weren't allowing individuals to choose to, to bring a therapy animal. Now, you could have an animal who is trained, and that's one of the situations that I anticipate this policy addressing, is a student who has some emotional behavior, that there's an animal trained to help calm and soothe. And, and so again, you'd go back to those same kind of training pieces. Does it meet those criteria? Is it there for a specific task versus the, the whole group piece? But it gives us some criteria as to how to make those decisions. Other things you'd like for us to just check and make sure that it's addressed in the policy before we bring to the board for consideration?
Well, I think if there are specific requirements for a miniature horse, I think that ought to be included. God forbid. I can't, because I can't imagine what they would be either, other than, you know, one of those little catcher things underneath their tail. But.
We're not horsing around, is what you're saying.
That's what he's saying. I think this is an area we're going to see requests increase. It's becoming
I would agree.
a bigger topic. There's a wider range of areas that animals are being trained to address. And not to mention that we do have some staff who have strong beliefs about therapy animals in classrooms. And so I think this just gives us a starting point of a set of guidelines to kind of guide our decision-making around animals in our school system.
I did have one question. Whenever you were saying that it would be required to have some type of training from an AKC-recognized group, are there specific groups that are recognized by them?
Do you know, there are. And what, my understanding from, I talked to a school district in the Kansas City area, to their assistant director on the procedures piece, and they said what they were really trying to avoid, and that would be my concern, is the opposite is you could go on tonight and print a certificate for, for your dog and bring it in. The difference is going to be that most likely what you're going to find online is not going to be registered with the American Kennel Club. And so it hopefully just provides a little bit more security for students in our district that the animals we are allowing into our school system have gone through a recognized training program. I can look into that further though, Julie, if that helps.
Is there horse training?
I, I would sure hope there are. There's got to be though. I mean, I would anticipate that there is. Otherwise, I mean.
Well, we've, we've seen in other areas, I, I think in particular, we look at airlines, people have these animals that they're required now to take online, and we know that they don't go through any type of rigor, and we obviously want the best for our students. I was just curious what, what that looked like.
I'll look and see. We'll double check.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. If you have other questions, send them our way so we can make sure that as we put a more formal policy together that it meets all of those criteria.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, section 6.02. Dr. Cobb is going to discuss with us the purchase of a new van for maintenance.
All right, we have a couple of action items here, and then we get back to discussion with a couple of things. But the, the HVAC van is a, is a topic of discussion because the one that we, we currently use with, within the maintenance department has well over 100,000 miles on it, and apparently some brake issues that are going to cost us some money. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to be spending the amount of money to repair and still have a 10-year-old van with 100,000 miles on it that we'll just kind of be waiting for the next thing. Our HVAC repair person, Rob, is fantastic and does amazing things. And, and our HVAC systems have probably never been better, specifically after bond issue that replaced nearly all of them within the buildings. And so there's a lot of things that he can do now that saves us money overall. This would be one of those things that would benefit him and having, making sure that he had all the equipment necessary with him whenever we were there. And give, give Jamie the van that he's currently using that would be a, a step up from, from what he currently has. So we ask, really, there are very few places that you can go to buy commercial vehicles that are, that are worthwhile these days. So we reached out to both Shawnee Mission Ford and Alitha Ford. Both of them gave us quotes on the commercial vans. You've seen the pictures of them. Shawnee Mission Ford had the one that was, was the best opportunity for us. I think at $38,109 was currently in stock, and apparently Steve Gibber Gibbs has worked with us to, to deal with the purchase if, if, if the board approves tonight. So any questions over the purchase of a, of a van for our maintenance department?
I have a question over the purchase. I think Susan asked this question once long ago. Why do we always buy Fords?
We don't. Darrell drives a Dodge. We have multiple Chevrolets within the fleet. Typically, we've bought Fords because we've purchased them from hometown dealerships, and Ford has always had the best deals. So we, I believe the Dodge that Darrell drives, we purchased from South Star. But, you know, it just depends, I think, on, on what our needs are. Now what we're getting is that our dealerships, the, the needs of our district are, are fairly substantial. And, and what we're finding is that not all of our, our local dealerships can provide the same resources that we need. And so they'll, they'll push us up, and now that, that Bob Allen is from, is from the Kansas City area, we oftentimes get pushed that direction anyways. But Alitha and Shawnee Mission had the best opportunities in this particular case.
I don't think there's any Chevy dealers that have the commercial fleet that those two Ford dealerships.
Yeah, I don't think so either. It's, it's fairly difficult to find a commercial fleet vehicle these days. It's not the easiest thing in the world, especially to meet the needs that we're looking for here.
Any discussion before we ask for a motion?
Madam President, I move that we accept the bid from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of, well, I had it here, $38,109.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0.
All right, the, the next one, and I'll have Mrs. Whitaker help me out here if I, if I screw this up somehow. But Mrs. Steinbach, who is a, a new science teacher at Ottawa High School, participated in Franklin County leadership last year, and, and part of their program was to support the local food pantry here in, in Ottawa, Kansas, in Franklin County. As she's come to, to Ottawa High School and worked with us, she has brought that passion into, into our buildings. And currently, we are housing a portion of that food pantry within the new culinary classroom at Ottawa High School. This has provided multiple benefits for our district and for our students. And one, that our kids are now involved in the process of learning what that food pantry looks like and how it works. The, the engagement that it takes in order to make it work and working with the families and so on and so forth. It has also provided other jobs for groups within the building to make sure that it works successfully. So we've seen some groups take care of the packaging. We've seen some groups take care of the creation of the food. We've seen some groups take care of, of delivery and, and handout. There are lots of different opportunities that is created. But what the Franklin County Food Policy Council asks us to do is to create an MOU, in essence, that we don't yank the carpet out from under them in the middle of the year. We don't have any intention of doing so. It's a great opportunity for our kids. Ultimately, this just says that we'll continue to have that working agreement with them throughout the year, which I think is a, is a great deal for, for both our students and the Franklin County Food Policy Council. You can see that they actually filled in October 8th of 2019 as they delivered it to us, I think just thinking that we could just sign it and be okay with it. But we've brought it to the board regardless to make sure that there, if there are any questions, that we can discuss it here. And if, if everybody's on board, we can go ahead and approve and continue a great, a great situation for our families within the, within the county and community, as well as our students at Ottawa High School. But be happy to answer any questions about it if there are any.
I think this is a great idea, and, you know, there's a lot of families that will benefit as we can see from the numbers. So Madam President, I move that we approve the MOU between Ottawa High School and the Franklin County Food Policy Council.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0.
Okay. One of the, the very fun items that you all will get to do at the next board meeting is to go through my evaluation, which I know is something that the, the board looks forward to twice a year for me and in the past yearly for, for our superintendents. One of the pieces of that evaluation was to address how far we have come with the strategic plan. So I wanted to make sure that you could see what it looked like. And maybe more than anything, celebrate the things that we've done in a very short amount of time. But if, Dean, if you would scroll down, we get to the action items of the strategic plan, and, and I did a couple of things. So there are four, four goals within the strategic plan. The first one is student learning, and that's the one that you see here. And remember, this is the one where we, we broke the, the first goal into the three components of our vision statement. So it is, all students will graduate with the knowledge, all students will graduate with the skills, all students will graduate with behaviors. We ask each grade, well, each not grade level, each building level to then break that down into action statements. We defined it. We created indicators for, for each one of those things. And what you can see here is that the green indicates that if you walk into any classroom, you should see this happening, or that we have taken the steps within our system to provide it. The yellow means that it's there. You're probably not going to see it all the time, that we're still working on the improvement across the way. It does not mean in any way, shape, or form that we are done working on it. It simply means that these things are happening, that you should be able to see them, and we continue to grow with them, and we still have a great deal of work to do in each and every one of them. But it does, as, as you scroll down, it does begin to draw an understanding of how much work our teachers and staff have done in a very short amount of time to meet the needs of their students. As, as you continue to look and see, there are very few that have not been addressed. And those that have not been addressed, so for instance, this one says that all teachers will utilize standards-based grading practice to communicate student growth. I didn't indicate, or I didn't highlight the indicator, simply the action steps underneath them. So it doesn't mean that we're not doing those things. It means that I, I indicated that the action statements that are associated with them are in place. And these are things, these are, these are all major components of the transformation that has existed within our district and the work that our pasing staff over here have done, and you can see that there's a whole lot that goes into it. So if you look at the next one, and this one is skills, all students will have the skills to hold life-sustaining employment. You can see that there are a couple of actions that have yet to been done. For instance, update OHS department websites to reflect pathway connections. Part of the reason that there is nothing there is that we've basically taken this off their plates until we address what's going on with our own websites here and the, and the transition that we have to, to a different platform. When that happens, we'll begin to have some different conversations about how all of those things work together and how we can utilize that, that website, as well as Twitter and Facebook and Instagram or Snapchat or whatever it happens to be, to ensure that we're communicating with parents effectively and that they can utilize those platforms to get the information that they need. But as you scroll down there, you can see all of the things. And we can move past goal one if you want to go to goal two, which would be, that's still three. There's goal two, which is our redesign initiatives. We've kind of stopped talking about redesign as a redesign, and it has really become who we are and what we're doing. But again, you can see the flexible schedule piece is something that has taken place really predominantly at OHS. Dean and I were looking at an attendance sheet. In the first, what, seven weeks now of the school, we have provided through open hour, 26,000 minutes to over 300 students of personalized instruction based upon their area of need. That's a lot. It's an incredible piece of information that we've gotten from the way that we draw attendance, from the way that we do things there. And we were sitting at, what, 70 some odd percent, I think. Dean's going to pull it up here. So this is, this is our amazing tech director here. So we have almost 80% of our students attending the meetings that they're supposed to attend, right? So that doesn't mean that we got 20% out there where they're not supposed to be. It may mean that some of those 80% were not at school that day, right? So they couldn't make it to their meeting. It might also mean that some of them are gone for activities or whatever it happens to be. So we're really pretty excited about 80% of them making it to their meetings. 12,000 total meetings scheduled, and you can begin to see, Dean's going to show us the, the minutes here. Except you can't log in, so. Oh, yeah, yeah. But what you will see is 26,000 minutes, again, of personalized instruction for our students. And this is a big piece of the change that we've tried to make in having our schedules be more flexible and more student-centric and personalized their needs. We're having the same conversations at the elementaries as we start identifying really what's happening, but that conversation is very different in terms of the scheduling. It's more centered around the conversations that we're having with Tazan about what we really need to do in terms of intervention for our kids, where those interventions might lie, how we work them through the process of the day and what it looks like. But the flexible scheduling piece is something that's going very well at this point, but something that we are not resting on. Open hour is not the end of it for us. Mrs. Whitaker, Mr. Stoltenberg, and I have a trip scheduled to go to a district just outside of Omaha, Nebraska that is currently implementing a flex mod schedule that basically provides an avenue for students to determine how much time they need to spend with each instructor during the day. So if you're great at mathematics and you don't need to spend 51 minutes in the classroom, then let's find how much time you do need to spend there, and let's utilize that time in a different space for you to continue to grow as a student. So really great things coming our way. If you continue to scroll down there, you guys can see what's going on with the, with the, with the strategic plan. Standards-based grading, one of the things that, that I wanted to look at here was that this will be the first year that every elementary teacher will be utilizing a standards-based grading format. Again, we have gotten to this point in a little over a year. That's a huge change and a huge shift for us. The, the even greater part in having this conversation is recognizing that we now have teachers, because we've been talking about standards-based classrooms and really, really looking at what we want students to learn, how those standards are aligned and how we should be teaching them, that we've got teachers at the middle school who are ready to start piloting standards-based grading systems within their own building, what's happening right now in our social studies department. So as we continue to evolve in this, the process of integrating that standards-based system all the way through is going to become easier and easier for us. Not that it will be easy, but it will be easier because we have people who have already identified and bought into that system, which is a, a huge benefit to us. If you scroll down past standards-based grading, you get to Bertha Pre-K. There are a lot of things that have happened in Bertha Pre-K. A couple of things that, that changed the direction that we thought that we were going to go. going to go. We were hoping that we were going to see more grant funds, that we could really identify a full day, four-year-old preschool program. Um, that didn't happen for us, so we kind of had to, um, huddle up and, and think of a different path for, for where we wanted to go. But the opening of the pre-K center and being able to have the spaces that we need will really provide the opportunity for us to do something different in years to come. And you can see the other things that we've accomplished there, um, within the, within the birth the pre-K setting. And then the last one is individual plans of study. We have not called this individual plans of study at the elementaries, um, in part because they don't need us to tack one more thing onto their plates. But what it is, is something that they're already doing and that is about goal-setting with kids, understanding the learning processes of kids and simply documenting what those things are. And that individual plan of study will then follow them through the ranks as we get into Zello for middle school and high school. This is a big piece of, of really trying to personalize instruction for our kids and making sure that we meet their needs, uh, wherever they're at as we start, as we start getting them ready for, uh, for transition either to middle school or high school. Um, social, emotional, we won't talk about that much here. You can see where we're at, but Josh spent a whole lot of time talking about social, emotional, utilization of Sabers, Boys Town and those metrics that we have. And then the last one is where we're at with the strategic plan. We did go over it this summer with our, with our, uh, administrative staff. We've got changes that, that probably need to come in, um, that we need to address and we'll talk about those things here with our, with our board at some point in time. Um, but you can see that over the course of a year, we have addressed nearly every single piece of the strategic plan. Again, not that it is done and it is complete, but we are working and our teachers work really hard to make sure that these things become ingrained in our culture and it's not just a, a, a one-time shot of what we're doing, but this is who we are and this is who we've become. Questions over the strategic plan? It's a little overwhelming, I know.
Okay.
Great. So last conversation is, uh, stadium turf. Um, and there's a lot of conversations that need to be had here. Um, but as we discussed, we have, um, at this point about 1.8 million dollars that comes from a myriad of places. Um, a, a minimal amount left in bond funds. Um, and again, we'll see how much is actually there when the, when the PAC is complete and when the pre-K center is complete. Currently that funding amount I think was $6,000. That is, that is, um, at this point unaccounted for in the bond. Um, I believe that it will be more than that as we have, um, we have funds that will not be utilized, contingency funds and so on and so forth that, that may still come back to us. I think there was about $6,000 in bond funds that were, that were unaccounted for. There was also a, an amount of money, I think close to $600,000 that was based on, um, interest that we had drawn off of the bond. There was a little less than 1.2 million dollars that came from an insurance settlement for hail. In total, we get to around, and then of course we have the Lincoln Lot sale, um, $75,000 that's sitting there. We have just under $2 million to, to work with here, um, that needs to be utilized in some capacity in this way because in, in essence is one-time money, right? So, um, whatever we spend it on, we need to, we need to recognize that the longevity of that money being here doesn't exist. Um, so we have, we have talked about, um, continued renovations to our facilities over the course of time. Um, we had a conversation about the things that we thought were most important. Pre-K was one of those, we added that. Playgrounds were one of those, we added that. The other piece that we had talked about was utilizing, um, a turf renovation and undergoing a turf renovation on both the football field and the soccer field at Ottawa High School. Um, so we have reached out to three different companies, ATG, Hellus, Kansas Turf. Um, all of them come highly recommended from every superintendent that I've talked to, every AD that we've talked to. And you can see their work, uh, here in the, in the local area. Lewisburg's football field, uh, that they just opened up this year is, um, a Kansas turf product. Um, Spring Hill, um, I believe is ATG and, um, Gardner is Hellus, I believe. Okay, so you can, you can see all of them do fantastic work. And what they will all tell you is that the turf that they utilize is all made in the same place in some city in Georgia. And really it's about installation companies that, that create the difference. A big piece of the conversation that I want to have today is, one, is this still the direction that our board wants to go as we move forward? Um, my intention would be not to engage in any conversations from a contractual standpoint or even getting any of the, the entities excited about, um, conversations of contract until we are completely done with the PAC and with the pre-K. I would like to know exactly how much money we have, not to, not to say, yep, let's do this and then something come up that contingency monies went here or there. I want to know exactly what we have and the threshold, um, of dollars that we can utilize for a project of this magnitude. The other piece is that all three of them exist within the purchasing agreement for Kansas. Okay, so this is a conversation that we've had before. Here's why it's a little bit different with this group. In order to go out for an RFP, um, we would have to enlist the services of an engineer to tell us exactly what we want to have done. We would pay for those engineering services to tell us this is what we want in the RFP and then we would pay for the engineering services of that entity on top of it because you're going to pay for them anyways. The, each of the three groups have an engineering component within their groups. So they all come in and they all do the engineering of, of, of the area, whether it's, um, how your, how your runoff goes, the support of the, of the sod and if you have to do, um, retaining walls and, and all of those things. Um, it has been spirited conversation when we've talked about, um, the, the Kansas purchasing group. Um, but in, again, in this case, the difference is when all three companies are right about the same price threshold at this point in a rough estimate, somewhere between 1.3 and about 1.7 million dollars to do both, to do both facilities. Um, if we engage in an engineer, in contracting an engineer, the cost of the project goes way up just to meet what might be a benefit in, uh, in the bid process. Um, so that's a big piece of this conversation. Again, we're not ready to go out for contracts, but it's, I, I wanted to open up to get questions from any of you to see where we might need to go with it. Um, we're not making any decisions today, but it'll be a part of that continued conversation. Um, but thoughts on anybody regarding turf, um, at, at the two OHS facilities? Chris?
Could we get some, um, feedback maybe from some of the schools within our league? I saw some of the stuff that we've read through at Wichita schools. I'd like to see maybe somebody that's recently had one installed.
Yep.
Someone who's had one that's eight or 10 years old at this point.
Sure.
And how it is holding up and what maintenance they have seen or maybe what they would do different or maybe they just absolutely love it. My concern is, is like trying to compare them to Derby and some of these others. That doesn't seem far, but weather, temperature and snow and rain can be drastically different from where we're at versus Wichita.
Yeah. Most of, um, most of the turf within our league is fairly new, uh, or has been redone in the last few years. Uh, but we know that there are some that still exist out there. Uh, for instance, Udora, I believe, or maybe it was DeSoto, one of the two had turf and has gone through its life expectancy and new turf brought back in. Um, so we can reach out to all of them and kind of see, uh, if they can provide some insight as to, as to, uh, how it works and how it's held up over the course of years and how much time they put on it. Um, and every one of them will say that it's an unlimited period of time. You put kids out there all day and it will, it will not impact, um, the turf. Uh, but I don't know that I necessarily believe that it won't impact the turf. At some point in time it wears out, so.
One point, will you share with everybody what you and I talked about, how we both have talked to other schools? What the benefit is of doing both fields because of scheduling? I think that's an important part for everybody to hear.
So one of the initial conversations we had was whether or not we turf football and put soccer stripes on the football field or whether we try to, to do both. And, and we've had lots of conversations within, um, school circles. Uh, I think Ottawa University would be a great one to talk to about what happens over there on the, on their football field, um, soccer field, lacrosse field, uh, all of the fields that exist on, on one entity. And the, the craziness that is the scheduling that goes into it. But if you think about just Ottawa schools, on any given week, you've got OMS sixth and seventh grade, or seventh and eighth grade football, you've got freshman football, JV football, and at least two nights a week you have soccer and then you have your Friday night events. We might be able to schedule those events and, and make it work. The issue will be if anything ever happens that you have to reschedule something, your schedule is going to go haywire. Um, and, and so there's a, a, a big piece of that that, um, that goes back to, you know, the, the group that was talking to, to us, uh, earlier today about, about developing a community in our sports and, um, and bringing back excitement. There is something great about walking out there and seeing that for the first time. And there's also something great about people having their own spaces. And then it's as important for our soccer kids to walk out onto a soccer field and have their space as a soccer team as it is for our football team to walk out there. It's also a very different playing surface. Um, so if you're a, if you're a soccer player, practicing on grass and then playing on turf are two completely different things. The speed of the game is, is much faster. Um, you, you, the way that the ball moves, the way that, that your team has to move is very different. So practicing on a, in a grass environment and moving to a turf environment, um, really does not provide us the best opportunity for our students to be successful in, in their endeavors on the field or on the pitch in soccer, but it's a big piece of it. Harold?
I guess for me, it kind of goes back to my PAC decision. When I first heard the district was building a performing arts center, I thought, are you kidding me? Why does Ottawa need a performing arts center? And I went up to Baldwin and this little 70-year-old lady took me through what Baldwin did. And then I came back and you were, uh, high school principal. And I said, I cannot believe how many students in a day goes through a PAC. We're not just talking about performing arts. So when we started talking about this, it also, uh, is important to notice, it isn't just sports we're talking about. It's band, it's cheerleading, it's a lot of other things that use these fields on a daily basis. So when it's wet or, uh, muddy or whatever, they limit band only once a week, you know, drill team can't go out there. So I think we got to keep in mind that there's a lot more than just sports using these fields. Second of all, you're right about spirited conversations about whether we use the state deal. So what you're talking about is if we're not going out with RFPs, that's fine. You've kind of already went out for RFQs requesting for qualifications. And in reading through there, there are some differences between the companies for Hellus, for example, I don't even, I didn't even know people did turf before I started reading this stuff. Um, you know, I do think there's different ways that they deliver their product. So if we did this, whenever the time's right, I suggest we bring them before the board and make presentations. And I agree with you, I think that we don't necessarily have to go out for an RFP, but if we brought them before the board, the groups that are interested and let them explain the differences, the way they're going to deliver the product. And then what we can decide upon is who do we think has the best product and how do they go deliver it best for what we're doing here at USD 290?
Yeah. So I think Harold actually brings up two very, very, um, great points. Uh, and, and first let's go back to, to the band comment. Um, one of the things that I think is lost in this conversation is one, how great our performing arts programs are and how limited they are in the utilization of a field in which, and, and half of a year is spent going over. The first half of, of the band year is all about marching band. And if you've ever seen them on a wet day out here in the tall grass on the practice football field at, at Ottawa Middle School, uh, you just feel bad for those kids. They're out there and they've got mukluks on and they're, they're trying to, to not get completely, uh, drenched and soaked as they're out there, they're marching. Regardless of the weather, they can be on that field and they can be on there for the, for the full hour and they can utilize the entire field and we don't have to move them to hash mark to hash mark and end zone to end zone so that we don't have spaces that are worn out in, in the middle of the field. We have a great band program and they do some pretty awesome things and we get great results at Baker Marching Festival and those types of. To be able to have them have access to that field every day if they wanted to go out there, I can only imagine how much more we improve. It's a great opportunity for us to do some things that the, that the football field and the soccer field are not solely owned by football and soccer, that there are other entities that utilize those things. Great opportunity for both middle school and high school to get kids out on those fields and do soccer and do football and do those types of things during PE and really utilize those spaces. It's also a great opportunity within our community to let ORC come over and let our older kids utilize that soccer field. It is a growing sport within our community. You see more and more kids participating in it. And I think we all know what it's like, or hopefully we all know what it's like, to walk into a field that you didn't think that you were going to get to play on. If you can remember a few years ago when we would, um, we would partner with, um, with Turner School District, our baseball kids always got to go play a game at T-Bones Park. And you want to talk about kids getting excited about something. They could walk in there where professional athletes got to play and it was a big deal for them. Our kids in our community getting to play on USD 290 in high school fields is that's, is really that same thing, right? And the more and more we get into club activities and the more kids that we have that are going to Lenexa Soccer Facilities and those types of things, the more we need to be able to have those types of things right here in our community for them. That's a big piece. Um, the other part when we, when Harold brought up, um, the different types of turf and having them come in and having a conversation, I think it would be extremely beneficial to have each of those three groups, um, Kansas Turf, ATG and Hellus come and talk to us about why their turf is better than somebody else's. And some of them will tell you that, um, they have different underlayment and some of them will talk about shock absorbers and all of them will talk about how they have, um, different, um, pads and whatnot in there to decrease concussion symptoms and so on, all of that. It would be extremely beneficial for us to hear as a group and have conversations with each and every one of them before making a really significant decision. Right? So I think it's a great idea and I think certainly something that we can, we can contact them and have them start coming in and talking to us, really open it up for questionings with our board and try to make a best decision moving forward.
I, I still like the idea because I just think, people don't realize when you talk about turf that we're, they think we're just talking about athletics and one sport team. But when you start studying some of this stuff, it's endless of the opportunities that can be done on that field.
Yeah. If you happen to go and watch the soccer game this week when the field was wet and, and nasty and, um, and there are a couple of renderings, if you want to pull up one of the renderings, uh, pull up the, the soccer. So that is one of the renderings. I think that one came from Hellus. Um, but certainly you can see how it fits inside of the existing soccer facility. The rendering that I just got today from Kansas Turf actually turfs the entire area. Um, and, and what they indicated would be a lesser cost than, than what Hellus was able to do. Uh, but it also has the Cyclone soccer in the middle of the soccer field instead of on the, on the borders. Uh, we can do whatever we want to there, but this is a picture of the football field. And again, it would turf every area that is currently a grass area there, um, and provide a, an opportunity for that entire, um, stadium area to be turfed. And, um, at this point we have checkered end zones in there. Some people are really appreciative of checkered end zones and other people are not. This is just a rendering, right?
One could be and one could not be. Win-win.
Yeah, we do whatever we wanted to.
We could wear Purina on the ends.
Yeah, we're a rule community.
Be in the Purina.
Rule community is, there's nothing wrong with that.
My, my, my concern, uh, during, during all this whole conversation, and it began quite a while ago, but you know, as we got information, has been, uh, just the safety for our athletes. And, uh, and as you have sent great quantities of information for us to read, I, I am learning more and realizing that the newer turf that they make is much safer than what was installed even 10 years ago. And studies that were done in the 1990s are really not relevant to, to what, what the product is today. But I will con- still am going to, to pursue. product is today, but I will still am going to, to pursue that.
A lot of the old studies on AstroTurf were done on facilities that were concrete underneath with basically a carpet over the top. They were awful on knees, they were awful on bodies and backs, they were, they were hard to, to fall down on. It's not the way that, that these are actually constructed anymore. They will come in and they will do a, in essence, a, a bounce test. They will take what is equivalent to a bowling ball and they have it set up to some digital reader and they'll drop it and they'll see how far it presses into the ground and how far it comes back up. So in essence, they're, they're testing the absorbency of the turf. And then they will come back in and they will, they will make adjustments to it as they need to. So that is a yearly thing that they come in, test our turf to make sure that it still has the appropriate absorbency to it. If it doesn't, they'll add those little pellets to it until it does. It's one more way to maintain the safe environment that we would want to create there over the course of time.
Are we going to ask them to heat them?
We can do that. We can do anything we want to if we've got enough money, right?
My kids played on heated soccer fields in Johnson County.
Yeah.
Rest of us were standing out there and freezing, but they were fine.
Yeah.
They should throw that in.
Maybe we'll see if they can, you know, a little, a little gratis for us, right?
Yeah. With the drainage issues at the soccer field currently, was that addressed in there?
Yep. So that was one of the conversations. And I, I walked through with ATG in part because I wanted Mr. Graff to kind of hear what my concerns were as we'd go through this and be able to talk to Kansas Turf and Hellus about the same issues. But one, there's an elevation issue there. It kind of sits down into the ground and what would that look like? But they all talked about the engineer coming in, being able to level, fill and raise, create a drainage system that would push everything back. And we actually went through to see where the drainage occurs now and how it, how it comes around. And we, we've got several ditches around there and then an open pipe at the end and it all pushes out to a water retention area just to the outside of the soccer field. So you, we would actually have underground drainage that would come in. So the water would soak through that and it would push itself to and it'd still go out to that retention pond, would not sit on, on the field, nor would we need any of the, the waterways that, that currently exist there.
And you wouldn't have that late summer brown strip.
Yeah, we wouldn't have that, that comes from whatever that pipe is that the city has underneath our soccer field.
Oh, I know.
Other questions? We'll continue to move forward on this. There's some great discussion and I'll, I'll reach out to superintendents and principals and ADEs to see if they can, they can give us a little more information on the longevity of their turf, those that have older turfs versus new turfs. I had asked Brad about this, thinking that over the course of this football season, we would have gotten to see some of those. And it seems that for whatever reason, this year, nearly all of the schools that have had new turfs have been home games for us. So we haven't got to, haven't got to see a lot of their new facilities. But we will, well, what would, what we had discussed today was actually getting in the car, driving to some of them, getting out there on it, sitting down with, with their principals and their ADEs, having some conversations with them, not inviting ATG or Hellus or Kansas Turf and I don't have to listen to their, their thoughts on why theirs is better or worse than somebody else's, but to really get that school's perspective on that facility, how it's worked out for them, the things that they have to do to maintain it, get all of that information so that we can make an informed decision when we're ready.
I'd also be curious what the students thought of the field.
Yeah, I would too. I would like to know what, what the actual players think of it. And also can the athletic, can, can Brad talk to the other athletic directors and maybe get some kind of statistics as to how many concussions or how many ACL tears and, and the severity of them if, if.
I, I will ask him to find that. I, I won't promise that anybody will give us that information, but I will, I will ask. We'll see if we can do it.
Who did OU's? Was it any of these three?
Uh, yeah, I actually think it was.
It was one.
Yep.
And that was probably.
I actually think it was, it was actually Kansas Turf. Kansas Turf did OU because they, we got their renderings today because they were coming down to have discussions with somebody about their turf facilities down here.
Is our current lighting that we have, will that stay the same and will that be adequate?
Yes. Our lighting is great, right? So the Musco lighting that we have, I don't know if you guys are all aware of this, but I could call right now and turn all the stadium lights on if I wanted to, just off of my phone. It's, it's really state of the art. They're incredible lighting systems. We can do it from anywhere, we can turn it off from anywhere. They can see what's going on with our lighting systems from Iowa where they're based. They're really, they're really great. Our lights stay where they're at and they'll work around all of those things and that piece will maintain.
We also have the architects and Josh who do a lot of other schools.
Yep.
So they may be another resource.
I talked to Josh. I, I brought Josh out there and had some conversations with him. And, you know, part of the, the benefit of the relationship that, that we have with Josh is, you know, the first thing he said is, yeah, we would love to partner with you here. But he also recognized that in us partnering with Lloyd Builders, that there's an added cost that goes with that. It's a question that I ask of each of the three. All three of them have every component of what we would provide in some other outside entity. The engineer, the construction manager, all of those things are housed inside of their system and all wrap up into a part of their price tag. Anything that we would do beyond that would then extend that price tag. And, and other than just having somebody there for oversight, probably doesn't provide us a great deal of benefit.
I think we just ought to pick their brain.
Yeah. And I will, I will continue to talk to Josh. See where we're at with that.
Did any of the companies give you kind of a timeframe on what it would take to do the, both those fields?
Yeah. It's amazing how quickly they can go down. They, and of course, the minute that we have conversations with them, they want us to sign a contract and be ready to go. But ATG said that we could, we could at least have, at the end of soccer season, they could get started and have it ready to go by the spring soccer season. We could have both of them done over the course of the summer, which is when I would plan to do it. Just get everybody off both facilities, say we're not going to use them, have them come in here and do both of them at the same time. So that means that they can have their excavators and all of that stuff in there to do their dirt work on both, on both facilities at the same time. When they're done, put down their, their substrate and all of that stuff and then put the turf down, finish it up all within one setting and not have to have multiple trips.
Thank you.
Okay? Any other questions on turf? Okay, we'll continue to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we do not need an executive session for personnel tonight, but you've all been presented with the personnel report.
I didn't get one.
Oh, I have it on mine.
Would you log in? Do you log in?
Would you like to log in this one?
No, that's all right.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the personnel report?
Madam President, I move we accept the personnel report.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0 and we are down to announcements.
There's a lot going on. You can read them all, but we're beginning to see some of our fall performing arts stuff. We have a fall vocal music concert coming up tomorrow. And then we have the theater, a play about a dragon coming up. And, and this is again, a piece that Mrs. Miller has implemented that was different from before. Before, it used to just be the fall musical and the spring play. Now we have some pieces sporadically mixed throughout the year to provide some of those opportunities for students that wouldn't otherwise have them. Wall of Honor is Thursday. The RE/MAX balloon, if you're interested in watching the RE/MAX balloon come in, it comes in on Thursday as well. It will land at Garfield. If you want to get in it, it will, they'll let you go up if you're lucky enough. It's tethered to the ground so you can, and you're not going to float away, but you will get to go up and down in the hot air balloon, which will be fun. And then, of course, this is the last, or last week was the last full week of school for the next three weeks. No school on Friday of this week is the end of the quarter. No school on Friday next week for parent teacher conferences. No school on Thursday or Friday the week after that for professional development with our staff. So a lot of things going on as you can see by the calendar.
Where will the music concert be held?
Cyclone room.
Thank you.
And the theater for now is still at OMA. I'm excited about the first one.
7:00, 7:10, 2:00.
Yep. And then, of course, we have, in the first year of its implementation, we have two girls that have, have earned a spot to go to the state golf tournament in Heston, Kansas on the 21st and 22nd. So if you see Kaitlyn Carrier and Aubrey Vasquez, congratulate them, huge feat for them and every student that gets to go to a state tournament, it really gets to be a part of something special. It'll be awesome. It's a two-day event, which is different than the way that it has been in the past, which is a one-day tournament. So it will be an overnight stay for them. They'll leave, I think, on Sunday, get up, play Monday, stay Monday night, play Tuesday and come home. But we wish them the best of luck.
That's amazing.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 7-0.